19th special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct our roll call.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here, thank you. Our first and only item under this special meeting is a study session. The subject is a study on Lehigh Southwest Cement Company. Do we have a staff report for this item?
Yes, yes, we do, Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member Councilmembers. I hope your 21 is off to a good start. I am Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. And this study session regarding applications submitted to the County of Santa Clara. Presentation mode. By Lehigh for a Reclamation Plan Amendment and by Stevens Creek Quarry for a use permit has been prepared in collaboration between both the city and the County of Santa Clara Planning Office. I will begin by providing an outline of how the presentation has been organized and will be followed by Mr. Rob Eastwood and Mr. Rob Salisbury from the county. Mr. Eastwood is a planning manager and Mr. Salisbury is a senior planner and they both work for the county. Also presenting this evening is Sarah Sigmund. Sarah is a partner with the law firm of Shoot Mahaly and Weinberger. So both Lehigh and Stevens Creek Quarry are located within the county with most of their lands outside the city limits of Cupertino. The county is the lead agency responsible for the regulation and enforcement of these facilities and is also the lead agency for the Permanente Creek Restoration Plan. The county is also the agency designated by the state to implement the requirements of SMARA. That's an acronym for the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. You'll hear more of that later. Other regulatory agencies that have jurisdiction over these facilities also include but are not limited to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District over cement plant emissions and the Regional Water Quality Control Board for Water Quality. The focus of the study session this evening are the items within the jurisdiction of the county and not any other regulatory agencies. Future study sessions such as this or community meetings like we had in December of 2018 and also in January or July of 2019 will be scheduled as these applications move along the process. Due to so many unknowns, these dates have not been set by both the city and county staff. Our regular communication will keep the public updated when meetings do make sense to have happened. Regarding current operations at Lehigh, the cement plant is thought to not have the kiln in operation currently, but trucks are hauling cement from the plant. That has continued and it is thought that the spent plant, the spent being produced is from a stockpile of material that are at the plant. For this slide. So we will start first with Lehigh and then secondly Stevens Creek Quarry. For each of these facilities, Mr. Salisbury will provide a background of the current regulatory conditions that they both operate as well as an overview of the Permanente Creek Restoration Project. For Lehigh, this will be followed by a description of the 2019 Mining Expansion Reclamation Plan Amendment submitted to the county and will include the issues of imported fill, request to modify the ridge line easement and vested rights. For Stevens Creek Quarry, Mr. Salisbury will cover the use permit and reclamation plan amendment application that was submitted to the county in September of 2020 and then resubmitted in December of 2020. And for each facility, Mr. Salisbury will share the anticipated schedule, opportunities for public input and compliance issues. Sarah will speak to the written comments the city has made for both facilities over the last two years. And as most of you are not familiar with many of the terms used to regulate a quarry, Mr. Salisbury will cover what is a reclamation plan amendment. As there's much to cover, a little bit of time, please hold your questions and comments until the end of the presentations and you should have at least 30 minutes available for Q and A at the end. So with that, Rob, I'll get to your slide and have you begin the presentation.
Before Rob Salisbury starts, and just a quick introduction, you have two Robs tonight from the county, so hopefully it's not too confusing. My name's Rob Eastwood. As Roger mentioned, I'm the planning manager for the Department of Plan and Development. The bulk of the presentation, almost all of it, will be presented by Senior Planner, Rob Salisbury. He manages our SMAR program. Again, to a quick note, just wanted to welcome the opportunity to be here. I hope this is educational. I know when you go into quarry regulations, it can be a bit tough to follow and to the extent we can be a resource to the council to just educate the council on the county's oversight and the regulations we're here tonight. And any thoughts you had, we want to make sure we have robust public outreach as we go through these processes and knowing most of the stakeholders following these quarries live in Cupertino, want to hear from you tonight and of course any stakeholders because we do intend to have outreach meetings and engage with those stakeholders as these applications go forward. Before I hand it over to Rob, just want to acknowledge, I believe in attendance, we do have our director, Jacqueline Onchano, and she'll be observing also. And again, we'll be available at least the two or three of us for any questions following the presentation. With that, Rob, I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you, Roger. Appreciate the invite and certainly appreciate the close communication and collaboration we've had thus far. So first, I'll just provide a little background on SMARA and the rules that regulate quarries. So as Roger mentioned, quarries in California are primarily regulated by the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. That's a state law that basically says a quarry site has to be reclaimed after extraction concludes. So that mandates that each quarry have a approved reclamation plan that identifies the areas to be reclaimed, the methods of reclamation typically that involve specifying final slopes and the revegetation. And each reclamation plan has to specify the end land use, which is of course going to alter the standard of reclamation. SMARA also requires financial assurances to ensure reclamation. So what that entails is on an annual basis, the operator provides an estimate to the lead agency, in this case, the county, that provides a dollar value for the cost of reclamation. Basically whatever it's going to cost to meet the current reclamation plan based on current conditions. And then the lead agency reviews that estimate and if satisfactory approves it. And then at that point, the operator is required to amend their reclamation bond, which is held by the lead agency, such that the lead agency could conduct reclamation as approved by the reclamation plan in the event that the operator is financially incapable. So next slide. So the subject here tonight is the two quarries in very close proximity to the city of Cupertino. You can see the label on the big brown area on the upper left. That is Lehigh Quarry. And I, hopefully you guys can see my cursor. I'm not sure if you can. But the Lehigh Cement Plant is right there. Then the main quarry pit is over, a little bit over to the left. And then farther left is the West Material Storage Area, but we'll go into those details a little bit, a little bit later. Stevens Creek Quarry is right south of Lehigh. There's an intervening ridge. But as you can see from this map and as I'm sure you're no doubt well aware, both of these quarries are in very close proximity to the city of Cupertino. And as Roger mentioned, actually a portion of each property crosses a jurisdictional boundary and so is in Cupertino. But there is an agreement between the city and the county that said for the purposes of SMARA, the county would be the lead agency and would administer SMARA and regulate the quarries as required under SMARA. So next slide. So just start a little bit of background with Lehigh Quarry. They're a limestone and aggregate quarry. Mining has been occurring on the site since the early 1900s, but has been, was acquired by Kaiser in approximately 1939. And that's the same date that the county granted a use permit for the cement plant. And you can see the label for the cement plant there. Lehigh Quarry is located at 24001 Stevens Creek Boulevard, Cupertino, and it's just west of the incorporated city of Cupertino. So just a couple other features to kind of mention here. The cement plant, it's separately permitted under a use permit, but the product that Lehigh mines and extracts from the main quarry pit is limestone that is then used to make cement at the cement plant. Couple other significant features here. You see some labels WNSA and EMSA. WNSA stands for West Material Storage Area. It's mining overburden and mining waste storage area. Then EMSA is the East Material Storage Area, which is another storage area. In addition, you'll notice the label that says Jaeger Yard. That will come up a bit later with respect to, excuse me, a few violations that were issued to Lehigh. And then you see a label on the south called the Rock Plant. That is location of a proposed mining expansion area. And you'll see a label, there's a haul road. So we'll get into a little bit more detail on that as well. Some of the other significant features here, the yellow boundary is the approximate boundary of the reclamation plan currently. And then the blue line here is a permanent day creek which runs through the property. So next slide. Okay, so then this is just a bit of a Google Earth aerial movie that kind of provides a little bit more context and provides people an understanding of really sort of what the site looks like if you're able to view it from above. So right now we're looking from the east due west. And right here, you can see the cement plant kilns and other structures associated with cement production. And then here is the main mining area. The gray there is the primary mining pit where most of the mining activities occur. And then the brown area, as I mentioned before, is the West Material Storage Area where they store a lot of their overburden. As you can see, it's quite a vast site. There's approximately 1,300 acres within the reclamation plan boundary. They have, I believe, close to 4,000 acres under total property ownership. And you can see it's a, again, it's a huge site and it is very close proximity to the city of Cupertino. So a little bit of background on the current reclamation plan and the regulatory environment as far as the county is concerned. Back in 2011, prior consideration of the current approved reclamation plan, County Board of Supervisors determined that Lehigh has a vested right to mine uncertain parcels. So during an evidentiary hearing, the board supervisors considered information in the record and determined that Lehigh had declared an intent through exploration, actual mining and other activities to quarry certain parcels. And so the board said, okay, based on that evidence that you, Lehigh, have a vested right to mine on these, in this geographic area. But what the board did not do at that time was make any kind of determination as to the scope or scale or intensity of the mining operation, what mining activities were vested and what products specifically Lehigh had a vested right to mine. So subsequent to that vested rights determination, Lehigh got a reclamation plan amendment approved. And like all reclamation plan amendments, it specified that the site would be revegetated. It also specified that the main quarry pit would be backfilled using onsite material primarily under the current rec plan that's supposed to come from the West Material Storage Area. The next slide. As we mentioned before, Lehigh also operates a cement plant under a separate use permit that was granted by the county in 1939. Because it is a separately permitted use and is not considered mining area, that cement plant is not a component of the 2012 Reclamation Plan Amendment, nor is it a component of the proposed Reclamation Plan Amendment that's currently in process by the county. The next slide. The county is currently processing two different applications submitted by Lehigh. First one is a Permanent Day Creek Restoration Project. This is a grading approval. And it's, as title indicates, it's a restoration project focused on improving the functionality and restoring habits, to some extent habitat of permanent day creek. That requirement came out of the 2012 Reclamation Plan and EIR. In addition to that, the county is currently processing a mining expansion reclamation plan amendment, which if approved would be a complete replacement of the 2012 Reclamation Plan and would do a few specific things. Next slide. So again, to talk about current status, as I mentioned, Permanent Day Creek Restoration Project was identified in the 2012 RPA. Lehigh submitted their grading approval application in 2017. And we have a scope and bid for the supplemental environmental impact report that's required for the project. At the moment, the county is waiting for funds from Lehigh for that EIR and so we can give the consultant that we've retained the direction to commence work on the EIR. And we do expect those funds to be in hand, I would think, within a week or two. Okay, next slide. The larger, more significant project is a mining expansion reclamation plan amendment. As I mentioned, it's a complete replacement of 2012, the approved 2012 rec plan. It would also import, I mean, would fill the main quarry pit. But instead of proposing to use material already stored on the site in the West Material Storage Area, under the current proposed rec plan, they would utilize roughly 10 million cubic yards of material on site and then they import an additional 20 million cubic yards of clean fill. So Lehigh is proposing to import about 1 cubic, 1 million cubic yards of clean fill per year, every year for approximately 30 years, which would entail about 600 truck trips per day, five days a week for the next 30 years. The other significant component of their application is they're seeking to modify a ridge along the north high wall, more or less outlined in green there. And that area is protected and covered by a 1972 Ridge Line Protection Easement granted to the county by Lehigh. And so in order to do what Lehigh would like to do, which is lay back that slope, stabilize it and gain access to additional limestone reserves, they have to get a modification of that ridge line protection easement. That is also a component of the application that the county is currently considering. The other thing to point out here, the red boundary is Lehigh's approximate total land holdings and then the orange boundary is the current, is the current reclamation plan boundary. And then you also can see on the slide, which I'll get into a little bit more detail, the rock plant reserve area is where the new mining expansion area would occur. Okay, next slide. As I mentioned, to these residents and Cupertino decision makers, this is probably the most significant aspect of this application is this import of clean fill. As I mentioned, it would be up to 600 truck trips per day, five days per week over the next 30 years roughly. And they're proposing to import about 1 million cubic yards per year. That represents about three quarters of all the clean fill produced annually in the greater Bay Area. Next slide. So the other, another significant component, as I mentioned, is a modification of 1972 Ridge Line Protection Easement. Lehigh is proposing to lower that ridge by approximately 100 feet. And that, in order to also stabilize that ridge line, which has been subject to a couple of different slides over the years, including extremely large slide, I believe, in the late 80s, early 90s. So that ridge has already been modified and it doesn't have the same topography or elevation as was there when the Ridge Line Protection Easement was granted. But nonetheless, the lowering of that ridge line could potentially have significant aesthetic and visual impacts because it could allow a view into the main quarry pit or of the quarry property from certain parcels where they don't currently have a view. So I also already touched on the, touched on the new quarry area. The other significant aspect of the application is Lehigh is also proposing to continue the export of unprocessed green stone to Stevens Creek Quarry. This is a use that Lehigh and Stevens Creek both started without permission from the county or the city of Cupertino. They graded in a haul road and started that transport for which they were issued notices of violation. And that import has now ceased, but both Lehigh and Stevens Creek Quarry have filed the necessary applications to try to legalize that export from Lehigh to Stevens Creek Quarry. And then on Stevens Creek Quarry side, legalize the processing and the import, processing and sale of material. Next slide, please. So along with consideration of the Reclamation Plan Amendment itself, the department is going to be asking the board for a vested rights consistency determination of the current application. As I mentioned, in 2011, the board found that Lehigh had a vested right to mine in a specified geographic area, but they did not mention intensity, the nature of the product being mined or any kind of, any process. And so what we're asking the board to do is to evaluate the current application for consistency with the vested rights determination that the board had made back in 2011. Next slide, please. At the moment, we have retained a consultant for environmental review. The same consultant is going to be doing the EIR for Lehigh and the EIR for Stevens Creek Quarry. We think that'll have significant benefits because there'll be consistency of analysis and hopefully some economies of scale. So for the, for the Reclamation Plan Amendment, we're still negotiating on the EIR scope with Lehigh Quarry, with Lehigh Permanente. And once those negotiations are completed, then we'll have a scope and bid and we will request the funds so our consultants can commence work. The next slide, please. So our next steps here is, as I mentioned, we have to finalize the EIR scope. Once that's done and we have the funds from Lehigh, we'll direct our consultant to start work. So the very first step and really the first opportunity for significant public comment will be the publication of the notice of preparation. After that, there'll be a public scoping meeting for the EIR. After that, there'll be the time period needed to actually prepare the draft environmental impact report. And at some time during that process, we anticipate having the vested rights consistency hearing for the board supervisors. Once the draft EIR comment period is over, or I should say during the EIR comment period, obviously the public will also have the opportunity to comment. After the close of the public comment period, there'll be a planning commission comment meeting. That's to allow the public to verbally provide any EIR comments they might care to. Next slide, please. After that, there'll be the final EIR and then there'll be the Board of Supervisors' consideration hearing where the board will consider the EIR, will consider the reclamation plan amendment, and they'll consider the proposed modification of the ridge line protection easement. So the reason we don't have specific dates associated with any of these project milestones is we don't, they all really start once we have a final scope for the EIR because that is not yet finalized and we haven't. So we don't, we don't know when our consultant will get the authorization to proceed work. And so once that's, once we have that scope and bid finalized, we will be able to provide some dates along with these milestones, but again, at this point, we just can't do that. Next slide, please. So opportunities for public comment, we are just the very beginning of this public process. So each of these steps, the public has, has an opportunity to provide whatever comments they might like to. So again, that's during, you know, during the EIR scope and meeting, when the notice of preparation is prepared, circulated, during the vested rights consistency hearing, during the EIR comment period, and then at the planning commission comment meeting and then at the Board of Supervisors' hearing. So plenty of opportunities yet to come for the public to weigh in and provide their comment and for the city of Cupertino to continue to weigh in as you already have been doing. Next slide, please. Now to just talk a bit about compliance issues. Recently, the county issued a notice of violation for sediment discharge in the Permanent Day Creek and the Regional Water Quality Control Board issued a notice of violation for the same discharge. The county issued our violation in June of last year, or sorry, June of 2019, it's now 2021. And the Regional Water Quality Control Board followed up with their violation a few months later. I'm glad to report that both of these violations have been abated. Lehigh abated the county violation by improving erosion and settlement and sediment control systems in general on the Jaeger Yard site and the large mine waste slope above Permanent Day Creek. They also put in a detention, aligned detention basin at the bottom of that slope to catch any other earth, sediment or runoff. And then that detention basin is tied into Lehigh's water treatment system. So any water collecting in that discharge basin gets routed into the treatment system. Selenium is extracted and then it's discharged. The other, the other violation that's county's aware of directly related to Lehigh is a violation issued by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. It was a violation that was issued for exceedances of the selenium standard. And then in speaking to SF Bay Water Quality Control Board staff, they characterize those exceedances as minor and caused by mechanical failures and they have no plans to ask for any changes to Lehigh's selenium treatment system. And the, and the Water Quality Control Board issued a mandatory minimum fine for that selenium exceedance. And there's a second exceedance that they have not yet issued a fine for, but they also expect to issue a minimum, mandatory minimum fine for that one. Okay, next slide.
We're going to give you a break for a minute before we get into Stevens Creek Quarry for compliance on a portion of property within the city's jurisdiction. In the summer of 2018, Lehigh began grading to widen an existing PG&E Cal Fire Road between their property and the Stevens Creek Quarry property. Most of this road is in the county, but when the county and the city discovered that the grading was occurring, county directed Lehigh to cease and desist. Shortly thereafter, the city issued a notice of violation for illegal grading and removal of trees. Subsequently, the city has required Lehigh to submit plans and to return the road to close to preexisting conditions and to restore the trees that had been removed. Lehigh has submitted several iterations of plans and are close to having them finalized. And the tree planting and restoration has been completed and we expect the regrading of the road to occur as early as the summer. I think the county also issued a violation to this point. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Rob, for Sarah's slide?
Well, yeah, thank you, Roger. Yeah, so we issued a notice of violation for this issue to both Lehigh and Stevens Creek Quarry. For Lehigh, it was essentially it was a violation for mining disturbance outside of the reclamation plan boundary. And so as part of their, the reclamation plan amendment application that county is currently processing, they're proposing to amend their rec plan boundary to encompass the area where this haul road was graded in. Separately, the county issued a notice of violation to Stevens Creek Quarry. It wasn't a primarily a SMARA violation, it was a violation of zoning ordinance because under the county ordinance, importation, processing and sale of material is a different use and a separately defined use from the permitted quarrying operation. Thank you, Roger.
You're welcome. All right, and Sarah, this is your slide.
Sure, as a few people have mentioned, the city's been very actively engaged in the process with both quarries, especially since about January of 2019. And that's when my involvement also began. In late January of 2019, the city submitted comments to the county expressing concern about the export of aggregate that has been described in which Lehigh began exporting essentially its waste rock to Stevens Creek for processing and sale. That was initially done by this internal haul road that then was shut down due to the violations that Roger and Rob just described. That transportation moved onto city streets, which resulted in the city's comment letter stating that there were very negative impacts on city residents, on city infrastructure, on safety. stating that there were very negative impacts on city residents, on city infrastructure, on safety. There were concerns about public nuisance. The county then shut down that use of city streets quite quickly. Subsequently, the city's been involved in reviewing and commenting on different iterations of Lehigh's reclamation plan amendments throughout 2019. Those comments have focused on some of the same concerns about the export of aggregate from Lehigh to Stevens Creek, about the potential expansion of operations associated with that line of business. Cities also expressed concerns about decreasing the height of the ridgeline and about the plan to backfill the main pit using imported fill once we reach the reclamation stage. As Rob mentioned, that would involve vast quantities of truck traffic through city streets. And so the city has flagged that as a concern and asked to discuss serious truck plans and other ways to address those impacts. And then most recently in May of 2020, the city submitted a comment letter focused on the vested rights determination that Rob described, noting that the export of aggregate was not necessarily a vested right and that that required a determination through a formal hearing in front of the Board of Supervisors. And we've been happy to see that the county agreed that that determination is necessary. So the city will continue to engage and to comment. As several people have noted, this is still the very early stage in the review process as these applications go forward.
We've got about 15 more minutes. We're going to try to wrap it up, Rob.
Okay, very good. So I'll try to just now provide a similar brief overview of Stevens Creek Quarry. So this is an aerial photo of Stevens Creek Quarry. You can see the reservoir, Stevens Creek Reservoir in the lower, right there. Co-locally, Stevens Creek Quarry is referred to as Parcel A, which generally has their truck scales and other equipment. And then Parcel B, which is their primary quarrying activity with their main quarry pit visible in kind of the upper left portion. So they've been an active aggregate quarry since approximately 1950. And, you know, they're 12100 Stevens Giny Road, Cupertino. And a small portion of their property, it's actually Lehigh property, but operated by Stevens Creek Quarry is also within the city limits of Cupertino. And that's, yeah, that's, thank you, Roger, that's that portion there where the haul road actually comes in. Right in that, there's a little, basically a little triangle from the upper left corner moving down to the little notch there. Just, just right. So next slide, please. So this is, oh, this is Lehigh again.
This, it's Stevens Creek. It just starts off this way. It's, it's loading.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So this is an aerial photo now or a Google Earth image of Stevens Creek Quarry. You can see how it's very close to Lehigh, there's just that small intervening ridge between the two, and it's close to the reservoir. This is a sort of a close-up of their primary equipment area. They also have a concrete recycling use allowed and that's kind of what's visible in some of those photos from this, this image. Then here is their main quarry pit. You can see some material stockpiles in the foreground. And then kind of in the background is their quarrying area where they've got some, some slope failures and other issues to take care of, which I will go into in a bit more detail. But you can see the relative scale. Lehigh is a much vaster operation than Stevens Creek Quarry. Okay. Next slide, please. So Stevens Creek Quarry operates under a use permit. That use permit was most recently amended in 1996 and actually expired in 2015. Stevens Creek Quarry and the county also entered into a mediated agreement in 2002. And like all quarries in California are required to do, Stevens Creek Quarry also has an approved reclamation plan. In 2018, the quarry and the county entered into a compliance agreement. It's this compliance agreement that provides Stevens Creek Quarry the legal authority to continue their mining operations despite their expired use permit. And under this compliance agreement, Stevens Creek Quarry was required to submit a pre-application for the required use permit and the required reclamation plan amendment, which they ultimately submitted in May of 2019. So that 2018 compliance agreement came out of a notice of violation, which also identified other issues related to Stevens Creek Quarry's mining operation. Next slide. So subsequent to that pre-application, Stevens Creek Quarry submitted their formal and full use permit and reclamation plan application that was submitted in September of 2020, and it was deemed incomplete. Stevens Creek Quarry then took those incomplete comments and resubmitted their application in December of 2020, and that was also deemed incomplete. One important thing to note here is that between their initial submittal in September and then their resubmittal in December, a significant change to their proposal occurred. So under the September 2020 proposed reclamation plan, they were contemplating a significant westward expansion into property owned by Lehigh Quarry. And they were, however, they were unable to get an agreement out of Lehigh to allow them to operate in Lehigh's property. And so their December 2020 submittal removed that westward expansion. So rather than trying to incorporate new mining area to capture additional harvestable materials, they're now proposing to just dig the current quarry pit floor deeper. And so that's where the additional materials will come from under their current proposal. So next slide, please. So in addition to the sort of the expansion of the mining operation, which, which again is not a, not a geographic expansion, but it deep, it would deepen the, allowed sort of maximum depth of mining operation in the main quarry pit. And also, Stevens Creek Quarry is also required to stabilize a lot of the failing slopes that they have along the western, northern and eastern rim of the main quarry pit. They also are required to relocate a settling basin. Historically, one of their sedimentation basins, and for those of you who don't know, it's basically just a, a feature whereby water with a lot of silt is routed and it's allowed to sit and then silt settles out and then clean water is discharged out of that sediment basin. So that settling basin was in-stream of Rattlesnake Creek and the Regional Water Quality Control Board said, no, you're not allowed to do that. And so under the notice of violation and the compliance agreement, Stevens Creek Quarry also has to relocate that settlement basin out of Rattlesnake Creek. And I'm glad to say that they're, both the original submittal in September and the subsequent submittal in December, both of those rec plans show that required relocation of that settling basin. The next slide, please. So as I mentioned, also they've got some minor updates of the reclamation plan boundary to do. They also have to correct some slope stability issues at the current mining pit. It was, when it was originally mined, they established benches under the approved plan, but unfortunately, all of those benches have failed. So they need to, one way or another, they need to correct that slope instability. In addition, like Lehigh, Stevens Creek Quarry is proposing to import fill for the purposes of reclamation. And, and so that would also generate a significant amount of new truck traffic. Next slide, please. So they're, they're also, as I mentioned, proposing to continue or restart the import of unprocessed greenstone from Lehigh. Some of their current proposal, they would up, import up to 1 million tons annually from Lehigh. This would be about 400 truck trips per day, although these truck trips would, if approved, would not go through Cupertino city streets. They would go through a haul road, a new haul road, directly linking the quarries. In addition to that import and processing, they're also proposing to extract and process 2 million tons of aggregate per year. And then, as I mentioned, they're also proposing to import clean fill for the purposes of reclamation. Somewhere between 3.7 and 12-point million cubic yards of fill. And they will, of course, also have to be clean fill. Okay, next slide, please. So I alluded to the fact that under the current zoning, the importation of greenstone and processing for sale is not allowed use. Our county zoning ordinance has a very specific definition for what constitutes surface mining. And then has a separate definition of, broader definition for activities that constitute sort of industrial uses. So under the zoning ordinance, mining activities are allowed in rural zoning districts, but industrial activities are not. So in the original incomplete letter, we informed Stevens Creek Quarry that that importation, processing and sale of material is simply not allowed under the, under the zoning ordinance. So with their December resubmittal, Stevens Creek Quarry added a application for a zoning interpretation, which if approved, would amend the definition of surface mining to encompass this import, processing and sale activity. Next slide, please. So at the moment, the schedules or the milestones for both projects look quite similar with one key exception. Stevens Creek Quarry's application is still incomplete. So based on the incomplete letter that we sent them in early January, they'll have to resubmit their application to respond to those comments. Once that application has been deemed complete, we can finalize a project description in the EIR scope. And then at that point, we'll have the normal project milestones. Next slide, please. Which would be publication of the notice of preparation, preparation of the draft EIR, EIR comment period, planning commission comment meeting, the final EIR, and then the planning commission consideration hearing. Now, some of you may have noticed that for Lehigh, the approval authority is a Board of Supervisors and for Stevens Creek Quarry, it is the planning commission. And the reason for that is Lehigh is also requesting amendment of their, of the ridgeline protection easement. Under county zoning ordinance, the planning commission is the, is the authority for reclamation plan amendments, even major reclamation plan amendments. But we also have requirements that say applications can be bundled and packaged together and go to the higher approving authority for any aspect of the project. So that's why Lehigh would go to the Board of Supervisors and planning commission, and Stevens Creek Quarry would go to the planning commission. Next slide, please. So similar to Lehigh, there's plenty of opportunities for public comment. We're also at the very beginning of this process. So it'd be at the EIR scoping meeting, notice preparation during the EIR comment period, and then at the planning commission hearings, one for the, one hearing to take public comment on the EIR. And then the subsequent consideration hearing where the planning commission actually will consider whether or not to certify the EIR, grant the use permit and approve reclamation plan amendment. Next slide. So compliance issues alluded to several already. They do have slope failures in their main quarry pit. A lot of the benches that they establish have collapsed. So we'll need to re-engineer, re-grade those slopes such that they're stable. SMARO does require, among other things, that final slopes be stable. So Stevens Creek Quarry has to do that. They also have to address their water, water quality issue, which is primarily relocation of that settlement basin out of Rattlesnake Creek. And then there's some ground disturbance, basically ground cracks extending outside of their current reclamation plan boundary. Next slide. In addition, of course, there was the notice of violation that the county issued in 2019, which we've already touched on, for the import, processing and resale of aggregate from Lehigh. And as I just mentioned, Stevens Creek Quarry had to apply for a zoning interpretation to try to get permission to re-establish that, that activity. Next slide, please.
This goes back to Sarah.
Excellent.
Sure, and again, the city's been engaged, starting with the same comment letter that I already summarized. It was expressing concern about the traffic of trucks between the two quarries on city streets in January of 2019. And since then, the city's been tracking and responding to the pre-application and application materials submitted by Stevens Creek to the county. Those comments have focused on, again, the concern about any export of aggregate materials from Lehigh to Stevens Creek. In particular, the fact that Stevens Creek is winding down in terms of the remaining onsite resources for quarrying, for extraction, and producing its own raw material. And so the city has expressed concern about finding a new source of material to extend the life of a property that's coming to its natural physical limits. The city's focused also on the impacts that trucks to and from Stevens Creek already has on, again, both residence and infrastructure and on the exacerbation of those impacts by either the expansion from the new line of business or the approach to reclamation that would rely again on importing a lot of clean fill from other sites. So again, truck traffic has been a big area of focus. And then the city's also commented on and expressed concerns about some of the water quality impacts and slope stability issues that Rob just summarized. But again, this is the beginning of a long process and so I anticipate plenty more on all of these subjects to come.
All right, we're wrapping up the presentation. Interested, you know, residents in the city and the county, these are the links. For the city, we, we maintain a webpage with all items, Lehigh and Stevens Creek Quarry. Interested persons can sign up for the, for an automatic email notification when anything new is posted. So an example would be like this presentation, we'll get it posted. And you can see the similar site from, from the county. And, and also, many are familiar with Supervisor Joseph Semidion has an annual meeting to discuss Lehigh regulation and has all the different regulators when we're meeting. In reality, we all got together around the table at community hall, but it'll be a virtual meeting, March 3rd, 6:30 to 8:30. As more, as that link becomes available, I'll make sure to get that posted and it'll get up on that same webpage I mentioned. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Salisbury and Eastwood for presenting. I, I meet with them once a month to just to keep updated on, on things that they're doing, what we're doing. I've really appreciated how straightforward they are and forthcoming they are with information and responsive they are to the comments that we've made. So, so thank you for that. Thank you, Sarah. So with that, Mayor, we're done with the study session presentation.
Great, thank you very much. So at this point, before we start asking questions from council, I want to give the public a chance to comment or ask your own questions. And so if you're attending, please raise your hand if you intend on giving any commentary so that I can get a sense of how to distribute the time here. So just to remind everyone, our default is three minutes per public speaker. And whatever time is left between the commencement, the conclusion of that and 6:40, I'll divvy up between the council members. So I see two members of the public with their hands raised at this point, three. And I'll go ahead and allocate the full three minutes. And the first public speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Hi, staff, county presenters and council members. I have one question. I don't understand, and maybe somebody can explain it, why an EIR would start before they've determined the scope of their, what's called vested rights? Shouldn't you know what they're allowed to do before you can go and let them think up a project? Anyway, if somebody could answer that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Peggy. So keep that timer rolling, video, or not. Okay, so I would like to give our guests or staff an opportunity within the time allocated to the speaker to answer that question. Would anyone care to provide an answer to the speaker's questions?
I can certainly do that, sure. This is Rob Salisbury, senior planner with Santa Clara County. So you're absolutely right that depending on the outcome of that vested rights determination hearing, it could cause the project to change. And this approach has come out of county's sort of internal discussions and discussions with Lehigh. But what would have to happen is if it was determined that the proposed reclamation plan amendment had aspects that the board considered to be outside of the scope of the vested rights determination, Lehigh would either need to amend their application to change their project description to remove those problematic aspects, or they would need to file an application for a use permit. So at that point, the work on the EIR would have to stop. And then there would have to be a new project description generated, and then work on the EIR would have to restart. So there's certainly, you know, some potential issues doing it this way, but there's also significant potential issues doing it the other way, which is you have to have an EIR that states that it's possible that, you know, a use permit would be required. Or you have to defer entirely all your work on the EIR until after that vested rights determination hearing. So you sort of have an array of, I guess, less, choices that all have downsides. And so we landed on the one that we felt would keep the project moving and not add additional unnecessary delays. So hopefully that helped.
Great, thanks very much. Our next speaker from the public is Patrick Mitchell. Patrick, I'll unmute you now.
Good evening, this is Pat Mitchell. Good evening, city council members and city and county staff members. My name is Pat Mitchell, I'm an attorney for Stevens Creek Quarry. I've worked on permitting and compliance issues for mine projects for the last 34 years all over California and a lot of counties, including yours. I just wanted to mention four quick points related to the presentations from the company standpoint. First, the mining certainly commenced on Site A of the Stevens Creek Quarry before 1950 and likely occurred before 1950 on Site B. So just for the record from our perspective. Number two, I have never seen this in a city letter, so I'm not sure the city even recognizes this or realizes that I should say, but Stevens Creek Quarry actually applied for a new conditional use permit for parcel A before the expiration of that in 2015. As Rob would know, that's actually noted in the compliance agreement with the county that was entered into May of 2018. Third, the January 2021 incompleteness letter from the county, Rob's correct, there was one recently sent to the company. But a few things for context. First, there's a major effort by this company to submit both the original application and the revised application. There's a lot of work was involved in that. And secondly, there were significantly fewer county comments in the second incomplete letter than the first. Much, much less comments. So there is progress towards resolving those issues that I don't think was necessarily portrayed in the presentation. We're continuing to work cooperatively with Rob to meet the county's needs in that regard and appreciate his efforts in moving this forward. And then finally, the county zone that controls both Lehigh site and Stevens Creek Quarry site actually envisions a wise use of natural resources. It's actually language in the zoning code. It's our position that shutting down either of these sites when there is existing natural resources to be utilized in an already disturbed landscape would actually not be wise use of natural resources. And it would actually, from an environmental standpoint, increase vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. Because if you don't have local sources of aggregate production, you end up having to long haul it in from remote areas. And there's parts of Los Angeles where they long haul aggregates 60 to 100 miles into the basin, which causes additional truck traffic throughout the regional transportation system and greenhouse gas emissions. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, very good. Our next speaker is Sharon.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. My comments are not technical, but they're positive. Because one thing I think is always missing from these meetings is a recognition that Stevens Creek Quarry is a valuable asset for both the city of Cupertino and Santa Clara County. What Stevens Creek Quarry provides, everybody gets to benefit from. There isn't a highway you've driven on. There's no tech campus that your children or grandchildren work for that doesn't have their products. The city and park paths that you bike, run, and walk on, they contain their aggregates. And some of them have been donated to Parks and Rec. Stevens Creek Quarry has played an outsized role for creating Cupertino's high quality of life. For 70 years and four generations, Stevens Creek has been owned and operated by the same local family, and they still live here. They've helped make Santa Clara County what it is today. I'd like to mention a few things that you probably don't know. Stevens Creek Property enables the city of Cupertino's composting station for free compost to residents. And really important, their recycling operation keeps thousands of tons of concrete and other building materials out of local landfills. Stevens Creek donates materials to Habitat for Humanity, helping build affordable and inclusionary housing. This helps Habitat to build more units than otherwise they could. And it's one way that Stevens Creek supports access and social equity. For decades, they've been supporters of the Fish-a-thon with Lions that has enabled hundreds of children and adults with disabilities to spend a day fishing on the quarry property. And you should see the smiles when they catch those fish. Stevens Creek has long helped support via services in Camp Costanoan. And they've worked with UC Santa Cruz, helping track wildlife at the quarry. Believe me, I have been a fundraiser, and I can tell you that many global corporations do not support the local community like this family does. A few years ago, I remember, they won the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce Star Award, and they were nominated by Apple. You know, I was thinking, Starship saying that we build this city, we built this city on rock and roll. But Stevens Creek Quarry built this city on rock, and they continue to improve the well-being and resilience of Cupertino and Santa Clara County. So I just wanted to tell you, if anything, this quarry is a local treasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is a caller ending 3560.
Hi, this is Rhoda Frye. Yeah, I just wanted to echo the previous speaker about Stevens Creek has been, Quarry's been around for a really long time. However, at this point, it's kind of mined out, it appears. And that's what quarries do, at a certain point, they get mined out. And with respect to importing aggregate, there's a pretty big project in Los Angeles that actually import, it was less expensive to import aggregate from Canada down to Long Beach, and it was to truck it in 65 miles. So the way transport works, it can be a little unusual all the time. I have two questions, probably for Robert Salisbury, relating to Lehigh. What is the status of the portable rock plant permit, and what is its function? And second, what is the status of the conveyor belt project, and what is its function? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rhoda. If anyone, Rob, you care to answer Rhoda's question? Or somebody from the county or staff? Or two questions, right?
Go ahead, Rob. Okay, thank you. So to answer your second question first, we have not seen any permanent application for a conveyor system. Depending on what type of equipment they're using, they may or may not actually need a building permit from the county. And then the other, Rhoda, was your question about a crusher? Or what was the first question?
Rhoda, I will, I think we lost Rhoda, actually, as a caller. But I see you on 3560, I'll unmute you again, Rhoda, if you want to talk. Your first question, Rhoda, was what?
Okay, hi. Yeah, I was having trouble with my computer, so I'm duly enrolled, and I raised my hand on the computer, sorry about that. So Lehigh has discussed with BackMed about getting a permit for a portable rock plant. And also, my understanding is a conveyor belt is for the cement plant, that the conveyor belt had broken down, and that it was going to be replaced.
Okay, thank you for that. At the moment, those are not plans.
15 seconds left.
Those are, the county does not have current building permit applications for either of those, and those are not things that we've been directly made aware of.
Do they require permits?
Okay, ready, time's up. We're going to go on to the next caller, or next public speaker, David Brown. And David, you'll need to unmute yourself to speak.
Star six to unmute.
I don't know if he's on the phone. If you are on the phone, hit star six. Okay, I'm going to go on to our last speaker with his hand raised. David, if you're able to unmute later, we'll go back to you. Gary Latshaw, welcome, Gary.
Am I unmuted? Somebody?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I'm going to be very brief. I realize the products that come out of both of these facilities are instrumental in building our community and have been. But it is unfortunate that they are so close to a metropolitan area such as ours and the other cities in San Jose even. So I think we have to keep that in mind as you go through the whole approval process. This is a major impact on traffic there. Certainly from Lehigh, their operations pollute the whole region, and they're a high emitter in the valley of nitrous dioxide and sulfur dioxide. So I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Gary. We're going to go back to David Brown. David, if you're able to unmute yourself, I'll unmute you as well from this side. Okay, so it looks like we are at our last caller. We have about, let's call it, I don't want to stretch it too far, past 6:40. But let's say a couple of minutes for each council member. I'll keep track of the time. If any council member has a question or comments that they would like to make, I will start us out briefly by stating that I appreciate that the county representatives came out here to speak with us and provide some information. Thank you to our staff for putting this together. My understanding is that due to the very interested appetite in our community regarding this, it is something that people would like to see come back on a relatively regular basis. We do have Supervisor Semidion's event in March. And so perhaps a couple or a few months after that, we would see another update in Cupertino. But does any council member have any questions or comments at this time? Please feel free to raise your hand if you do. I see council member Willie, and so we'll start with you.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much for a very in-depth presentation. My first point, though, is, you know, we've received so many emails over the years from our residents, the health impacts, the pollution, the effect on the community here. And so a couple of the questions. When we're talking about this reclamation plan needing a million cubic yards per year for 30 years, it's 600 trucks per day for Lehigh, and then Stevens Creek Quarry, from what I think I heard, somewhere between 3.7 and 12.5 million cubic yards per year for their reclamation plan. Well, if 1 million is 600 trucks per day, five days a week, 3.7 to 12 million is going to be 3.7 to 12 times that in addition. Correct me if I'm wrong, or is that correct?
So I'd be happy to. So not quite. So the total amount of material that Stevens Creek Quarry is proposing to import for reclamation is 3.75 to 12. So that's their total, and that will not be annually.
Okay.
But still a significant amount of traffic.
Yeah, okay. So now, trying to get our arms around this reclamation plan, 600 plus trucks per day, yet we have all these trucks transporting material out, is it not appropriate to be trucking material into fill rather than taking empty trucks in and full trucks out?
John, I'm going to stop you there. Actually, your screen froze, coincidentally, but you're right at two minutes at this point. So I'll come back to you. I will ask if anybody wants to cede their time. Is there anybody else that cares to make comments or questions at this point?
I just see David Brown.
I'm sorry?
I just see David Brown's hand is still raised, but...
I know, I'm talking amongst the council at this point. Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow, you're next.
Okay. So, yeah, this should have started at 5 o'clock, not 5:30. It seems this is a complex issue. My question, I think I would like answer for what John is asking. Also, maybe the staff can provide answers later. My question is regarding the scoping. My understanding is for EIR, we have notice of preparation, and then a scoping meeting at the start of the public process. However, it seems like the county is now trying to finalize the scope. I don't know what's the process of finalizing this scope. It seems that's done without any public input. And then it seems that once it's finalized, after the notice of preparation is started, that process, the EIR process is more for transparency. And, but then, if the scope is done in a way that's too much or too less, it's harder to change. So what are you trying, I guess, what process are you trying to decide the scope, final scope? And how are you going to decide that? What criteria?
Okay, thank you. I'd be happy to try to answer that question if you'd like me to, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please do. You have about half a minute under Vice Mayor Chow's time.
Okay, so no, that was a very astute observation. We're sort of talking about, when we're using the term scope, we're sort of talking about two different scopes. The first scope and the scope that we're currently working on is the scope that's prepared by the consultant who's going to be preparing the EIR. So they'll, you know, they'll prepare basically an estimate of what they think the EIR will be required to analyze, and the amount of time and the costs associated with doing that analysis. That's always the starting point, right? When you're retaining a consultant for any type of work like this. So that's the scope we're currently trying to finalize. And separately, there is the scope of the EIR, which the consultant has already tried to anticipate, but that sort of true scope doesn't get finalized until after the scoping meeting and the notice of preparation. So hopefully that answers the question there.
Hey, great, and I apologize, Vice Mayor Chow. Because of time constraints that you rightly point out, we should have started at 5. And we'll keep that duly noted for the next time we have a session here on this topic. We do have council member Moore, who hasn't spoken yet and would like to. Our hand is raised, Council Member Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I have a couple of questions. The current truck trip traffic is about thirteen hundred trucks per day. Is that correct? Question one. So then I want to know what the increase in traffic is. The West Material Storage Area, what are the contents? And why couldn't it be used after clean fill was put into the pit and a liner was located there? Or is it highly contaminated? And what is supposed to happen with the West Material Storage Area pile? And would you happen to know what the environmental screening levels are for imported fill? And then who determines what these levels are? Thank you.
Okay, so that was, that was a lot of questions all at once. So I, I guess to try to take them in, in reverse order, or I guess in the order that I remember them. So first of all, under the current reclamation plan, they are proposing to use West Material Storage Area materials. Oh, I'm sorry, your first question was about truck traffic. So the thirteen hundred truck trip per day figure that you're quoting is the limit that's currently placed on Stevens Creek Quarry under their use permit. As a matter of practice, though, they, they really never get very close to that limit. And we do collect proprietary truck trip data from Stevens Creek Quarry, so I can't really use any kind of specific numbers. But they really never get very close to that, to that limit. Certainly, you know, regardless, six hundred new truck trips just for Lehigh for importation of material, that's a significant increase in the amount of truck traffic total generated by both of these quarries. So related to import of fill, again, under the current.
I'm sorry, let me, I'm sorry, I, I do need to cut you off there. I, I hope that we can get a follow-up to Councilmember Moore's question, as well as the cutoff from Councilmember Willie's. I don't see Councilmember Way's hand raised, but I do see it now. So feel free at this time, and keep in mind our time constraint as our regular meeting starts at six forty-five. Thank you.
I actually would like to give the time to the consultant to answer the questions for, from John and from.
Okay, very good. So I, I did want to give you some, some time, Councilmember Way, but given the fact that we do have a very brief transition here, I don't think that in the span of the time that we have remaining, you can give, provide an adequate answer to the rest of the questions. And so I'll, I'll leave it at staff to answer the question for us. Besides Supervisor Semidians' March meeting, when can we expect this topic to come back to us in Cupertino City Council? Because obviously, there is a significant appetite from our community and for our council to know about this on an ongoing basis. Madam City Manager, any thoughts on that? Are we looking at maybe May-June timeframe for the benefit of the attendees and the public here?
Yeah, that's possible. What we had promised in the middle of 2020 to council was because the, the quarry issue was so important to the community, that we would bring the topic back in a little more bite-sized pieces when appropriate, kind of periodically throughout the year, which is why this particular topic was limited to the reclamation amendments, et cetera. It's a big topic, everybody knows, and there's lots of remaining questions. So it's gonna be, try and be timed with something like Joe's Supervisor Semidians meeting in March. And then, you're right, it's probably gonna be some months after that. It might be appropriate to bring it back to Cupertino sometime in summer.
Okay, well, great. Thank you very much. I would like to, again, thank you to our guests and attendees on this item. We're at six forty-four now. I will adjourn the special meeting. And in approximately a minute, we'll convene our regularly scheduled meeting on time. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. This is our first regular meeting of 2021. Hopefully, it goes better for everyone than 2020. And Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way? Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
I'm here. All right. So our first item is ceremonial. We have the pleasure of bringing to the public four proclamations today. And in the interest of being, being efficient, I would like to ask our public in the future, for, for this year at least, while I'm mayor, that we designate one person to speak on proclamations. Today, we're very happy to present certificates of recognition for Cupertino Science Fair winners who participated in the 2020 Santa Clara County Synopsis Championship. And I understand that we do have a member of the public here. And Mr. Williams, I believe that that would be yourself. Would you like to speak briefly on the achievements of our students? And, oh, let me try to unmute you here. All right. There you go. And Forrest, you'll have to unmute from your computer as well.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
Thank you. Mayor Paul and council members, I want to extend this opportunity to say thank you for recognizing your own students for their STEM achievement. Cupertino has always had outstanding students in terms of their participation and their STEM achievement. It is rewarding for them, for you, who are responsible for them, to recognize what they've done. It just takes, I'll say, hey, you did well. You did something that's going to help us in the future. Science, engineering, technology, mathematics will be key to the future. We can look at the pandemic when they tried to ignore science. And it's intimate in terms of where we go in the future. And so your recognition of them is just outstanding, and I, we really do appreciate it. I'm Dr. Forrest Williams. I'm with the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. And our mission is to encourage students, encourage parents, encourage teachers to consider the rewards, the challenges, the opportunities, and the thrill of science. We want them to be involved, for as the future, so will science. And science will play the role. And you guys are the rulemakers. You make the laws. You govern and take care of all of the citizens of the city. These individuals will come, they will implement the policies and things that you bring forth. We want the brightest and the best, and you have the brightest and the best. And I thank you so much for your consideration.
And thank you, Dr. Williams. We really appreciate your work over the years in supporting the International Science Fair activities in Santa Clara County. Madam City Clerk, I believe that you would like to place the names of our recipients of the certificates of recognition on the screen. And so we'll, we'll pause briefly to recognize. I, I can see the screen. I'm not a hundred percent certain what's being broadcast based upon our Zoom meeting.
Are you seeing the certificate of recognition, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes. I, I do see that. So thank you very much, and again, congratulations. We'll go on to item number two, which is a proclamation to Stanford University in appreciation and acknowledgement of their donation of trees to the city of Cupertino. We do have a representative from Stanford here today, Spencer Ayers. I apologize if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. I did grow up with a Lee Ayers in, in the Midwest, but maybe it's Ayers. So Spencer, welcome, and if you care to give a few remarks.
Sure, Spencer Ayers. I'm the Associate Athletics Director overseeing ticket sales and operations at Stanford University in the Athletics Department. And on behalf of Stanford Athletics, just want to say thank you for recognizing our contribution to the city of Cupertino and for being such great partners on this initiative throughout the fall and winter. Really excited about it and grateful for the recognition.
Absolutely. Thank you, Spencer. Really appreciate it. And it is such a sign of the times that instead of fans in your stadium during the athletic season, you put trees. And how incredibly appropriate for, for Stanford as well to put these trees forward into the community. So thank you very much for that. Our next proclamation is to the Santa Clara County Library District. Do we have a representative of the library district here? Please raise your hand if there is one, and you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have Cupertino Community Librarian Claire Verizio. I see her hand is raised.
And making sure that our residents have the services that they look to during this very difficult time. I do see our county librarian here. Claire, would you care to say a few? I'm sorry, our city librarian, I should say. Claire, would you care to say a few words on this?
I can. Thank you, Mayor Paul, and good evening, council and city staff. I'm Claire Verizio, the Community Librarian for Cupertino Library, a member of Santa Clara County Library District. Thank you for recognizing our library district and its service during this time. It's really been a team effort. Credit goes to our staff, who have just shown amazing creativity and dedication and a positive spirit. And as well, our library district leadership, Jennifer Weeks, our county librarian, is on this evening as well. And community support, council, our Library Commission, Friends Foundation, it's all really meant a great deal. But really, this is due to our patrons, our Cupertino community. They love their library. They value reading, education, lifelong learning, and we continue to see, even during a global pandemic, Cupertino Library having far and away the highest usage of all libraries in our library district. So I hope that you, as council, are proud of our community. I thank our patrons for continuing to show us the value and relevance that library service can have, and all the kind words that they have expressed about our service and staff over this past year. Keep up with us on our website, sccld.org. We look forward to being able to safely expand our library service in the coming months. And also stay tuned for news on our upcoming library expansion project, of which Mayor Paul has been an amazing champion. As we start construction, in just a few weeks, we'll be adding space to our library that's going to continue to help our patrons learn and grow and build community, and we're very, very excited. So thank you, and we really, we deeply appreciate the recognition.
Thank you, Claire. Very greatly appreciated. Thank you for your gracious and always thoughtful words. Our next item is item number four. It's a proclamation to the Hindu Swaya, and I apologize if I'm getting this pronunciation incorrect, Swam Sevak Sang organization to support the national campaign Health for Humanity Yoga-thon, also known as Surya Namaskar Yajna, running from January sixteenth to January thirty-first, 2021. And so I believe we do have a representative from the organization, Ashwini Khokarni. Welcome. Would you like to say a few words about the campaign?
Sure. Thank you very much, respected Mayor Paul. Namaste to everyone. We are a voluntary organization, Hindu Swam Sevak Sang, or HSS as it is called. We operate on the principle of universal oneness and unity, and peace and harmony for everybody around the world. So if we can just go to the next slide. Yes, so Hindu Swam Sevak Sang or HSS was started in nineteen eighty-nine in USA. And as of today, it has thirty-two chapters in Bay Area itself. This yoga-thon program was initiated in 2006, and it is conducted every year for sixteen days. We have also had the privilege of working with Cupertino City Council in 2016 and 17 during our Surya Namaskar Yoga-thon. So our next slide talks about what is Surya Namaskar. Surya Namaskar or Sun Salutation is a set of simple body postures, which are made up of ten yoga postures, which can be performed within a few seconds. A set of thirteen sun salutations takes seven to eight minutes to perform, and it is a complete exercise. And we all know the importance of having a healthy body and mind. And it is all the more important right now during these times to have a healthy body and mind. And Surya Namaskar or these sun salutations help us in building immunity as well as staying healthy by spending just seven to eight minutes per day. So apart from sun salutation, the HSS also is involved with a lot of community activities. This year, we undertook an initiative called Seva Diwali. During Diwali, we collected and donated close to around three hundred thousand LBs of food, packaged food, to various food centers. And within the Bay Area, we collected around fourteen thousand LBs of food and worked with various food shelters and soup kitchens, including Sacred Hearts, Life Moves, and West Valley Community Services. So HSS is very grateful and thankful to the city of Cupertino for recognizing this initiative and providing us with this proclamation. We have had our yoga-thon activities in various places, in schools, in communities, in libraries, parks. So unfortunately, this year, we are not able to do it in person, but we are trying to reach as many people as possible virtually, and helping people inculcate this routine of sun salutations in their day-to-day life so that they can all lead a healthy and happy life. Lastly, I would, once again, like to thank all the Cupertino City Council members for the recognition and support. I would also like to thank all the staff members of Mayor Paul's office, who worked during this time with us to get this proclamation from the city council. And would like to end my, my note on just one line. We firmly believe in a line which is said in Sanskrit, Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaha and Sarve Santu Niramayaha, which literally means, let everybody be happy and everybody be free of any ailments and be healthy. So thank you once again for recognizing this initiative by HSS. Really very grateful, and we look forward to working with as many community members as possible and take this healthy routine to everybody. Thank you.
That's a wonderful closing sentiment. Thank you very much. And thank you for you and your organization and bringing this very healthy activity to our community. At this point, we are now on item number five under postponements, as well as item number six. Are there any additional postponements that, that the staff or council would like to bring forward to propose?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of suggestions here.
City Manager?
So I would like to propose that the city council consider postponing item number thirteen, which is the second reading of Bird Safe. And additionally, item number sixteen, Dark Sky under Action Items. Mostly because we've heard some concerns from not only the public and our residents, but others, and that would give us a little more time to address these concerns and do some follow-up when, where necessary. And was hoping that I could recommend that you postpone even to a date certain that you could agree to. I do believe it does take a vote since the items were on this calendar from a date certain vote before. So there's a vote that's required. And I, I recommend that we move those two items together because they kind of sync together.
Okay, and before I, I open this up to my council, is there a particular date that you have in mind, Madam City Manager, for bringing this back? If we do identify dates certain to bring these items back?
I believe if council considered either March second or March sixteenth, I would probably prefer the sixteenth, which gives us a wee bit more time. But either one of those would be helpful. So I ask that you consider one of those. And I would also ask that we just reintegrate them together. So not that you would rehear the Bird Safe portion again, but you would hear the Dark Sky at that second time, and then be able to consider them both.
Okay, well, for the purposes of discussion, I will go ahead and move that request. I, I have received a lot of the concerns and correspondence that you're referring to. But I would like to hear this in, in terms of other input from council. So I'll go ahead and move that we postpone items number thirteen and sixteen to the date certain of March sixteenth. Is there a second for purposes of discussion?
Paul, second.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Would anyone care to kick us off if? Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Would anyone care to kick us off? If not, I would like to ask a quick initial question with regard to, but I do see Vice Mayor Chow's hand is raised. So, Vice Mayor Chow, I'll recognize you.
Okay. So, since Bird Safe is here for second reading, the staff, I'm wondering what things the staff plan to revisit. Would that mean we will maybe consider a revised revision? Because today, I was planning to ask if the council may reconsider the exemption for the single-family home, especially first floor. And should we provide at least some guidance on this before it comes back?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Chow. I actually have the same question. Madam City Manager, any response to Vice Mayor Chow's question?
Yes. In fact, a little bit of direction would be helpful on that. Say, for example, we were to reconsider council's motion to strike the exception on residential from last time, it would come back for a first reading anyway if you were to address them separately. So, we could consider those types of requests and direction from council at this time.
Okay.
I'd like to clarify that.
The attorney?
Yeah, this would be just discussion on the postponement, not on direction of the item itself. If any discussions on the item would need to happen once we hear them. But I would suggest that we clear, I make one suggestion to clarify the motion, that if council wishes to postpone, that it directs staff to bring back one integrated ordinance so that at that time, we could get direction from council on these issues and hear them and address all of the issues together in one ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Chair recognizes Councilmember Wei. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Actually, that was my question. Maybe we should just do a integrated one. Yeah, that was my question. Maybe that's a, because now we have studied the bird safety, and then we kind of got into the dark sky. And I realized that dark sky lighting overlaps with the bird safety lighting issues. So, maybe we can put them back into one ordinance.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Seeing all the hands raised, Vice Mayor Chow's hand is raised. Let me make my comment before I get back to you, Vice Mayor Chow. My comments are twofold. I think that it is a wise decision to do so, to bring it back at a date certain. In my mind, and I've wanted to push this forward faster rather than slower, but in my mind, it seems that for better or for worse, given our process, we have gotten a lot of the residential and the business comments very recently, even though, and I want to reiterate this, our planning department, our planning commission, they followed a very stepwise and iterative and well-knowned process. This started approximately a year ago in February of 2020. I understand that we've had a very unusual year. However, February of 2020 was before we did have those impacts of closures from the pandemic. And so, I would ask that our community, you know, for future purposes, follow our process so that we're not in a bit of a logjam in the last moment. Now, with regard to the request, I would like to try to invite some flexibility as to the scope of what we might consider when Bird Safe comes back, because the R1 component up to 15 feet was an amendment that was added. And it seems that there was a lot of pushback with regard to our residents' neighbors. I just, I don't want to get into the substance of this, but I would like to ask for flexibility with regard to that component so that we don't need to renotice. Second issue, and you know, the majority of us did sit in on the Cupertino Chambers LAC meeting on this, and where I was invited to speak, and no one had any discussions, you know, thankfully. In accordance with our city attorney's prior advice, but with regard to some of these questions from the community, I think it's very legitimate for people to ask, okay, what kind of treatment is it that we need to be putting on our windows? And when we do provide very good information, such as it's a very low-cost treatment, it's essentially, you know, stickers on a window, a couple of dollars a window, let's reach out to the industry. Let's reach out to the window companies as several of our residents have already done and written us about, and try to get some more guidance and some peace of mind for the people that will be needing to implement this in their homes and in their businesses. So, those are my requests for outreach. At this point, I'll recognize Vice Mayor Chow for your follow-up comments.
Okay. I find it's really weird the way we keep having this substantive conversation about an item when we are discussing whether to postpone. I mean, we did it in December, too. Wish, I think we should not postpone this. I mean, we should, we discussing this item doesn't mean we have to make a decision today. And Cupertino has this tradition now, somehow we have to make a decision when it's on the agenda. We don't. So, just continue, let's just consider this item when it comes up, make all our comments and additional direction to staff. Then, we know that we would have more questions, that staff would come back next time. That's normal to, it's normal to not approve an item the first time or second time or third time. Let's continue it after a discussion, then continue and have a discussion. That's not say it, that's postpone it. But then have all this discussion now, when maybe people are waiting to make comments at 7:30.
Your point is taken. I'll go on to Councilmember Moore at this point for a follow-up comment. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. It's just kind of a quick question. Procedurally, are we then going to public comment about the postponement, and then we're going to come back and deliberate on your postponement motion? Is that the order?
Yes, I was going to go to public comment immediately after the last council comment at this point. And I do see that there are a couple of attendees with their hands raised on this item. So, if there are no other comments from council at this point, I'll open this up to the public for their comments. Our first comment is from Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Good evening.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I have to admit, I'm a little thrown off by this because, excuse me, this particular ordinance was approved four to one in the last meeting. And I was excited and proud when over a year ago, Cupertino took the step to add bird tape design and dark skies to the city work plan. For me, it was a clear signal that the city was moving forward on its sustainability and environmental goals. And we've been a leader on climate change, getting an award from, excuse me, the local government, Institute of Local Government for climate change. And Cupertino has a proud tradition of an urban tree canopy. Residents passionately have supported trees in the city at many, many city council meetings over the years, and that that tree canopy is an integral part of the Sustainability Commission's project on Climate Change 2.0. With that tree canopy, we offer food, shelter, and rest for migratory birds, birds, excuse me, along the Pacific Flyway. These birds fly at night for hundreds of miles. In offering that respite, a key related responsibility is safety. Many people just aren't aware that their homes and their businesses may be dangerous to birds. They may not know how important their safety is to our natural world. On February 19th, I addressed the city council, oh, I'd like to ask Kirsten Scorsia if I might, the email that I sent in on this particular topic has some pictures, and I would like to, if she would please put those up while I'm talking, that would be great. The first one is of a ruby-crowned kinglet, the second one is of a dead ruby-crowned kinglet, and the third one is of the Pacific Flyway, of which we are a major part. I'm not seeing, when did you send that? It was about four o'clock. No, a little before, or right after. Anyway, right around four o'clock. So, if you find it, I can resend.
If you can resend, that would be great.
Okay, let me just do that real quick here.
We'll come back to you, Connie, if you want to.
Okay.
Forty seconds.
Okay, that's, that's fine. That's probably a great idea. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anjali Kouser. Welcome, Anjali.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm Anjali Kouser with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to encourage you all to take the recommendation of the city manager to move items 13 and 16 to a later date in March. And as many of you already mentioned, I think it is, it is best to combine these two ordinances in a manner because they do impact each other. And again, I would want to thank you for extending and giving the staff and the community more time to better understand the cost impacts of all this to our businesses, because we all do believe it's good to be bird safe and have dark skies. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Anjali. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa. And Lisa, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I had done that previously, and it was working. Okay. I'm a little surprised by Anjali's statement that she's representing Chamber, and now they want to combine the two ordinances again, when their letter of December 12th, signed by Anjali, said something the opposite. But I'm glad that that's changed. So, I'm just surprised, and I wonder what the reason was. In that letter also, Chamber had discussed, reached out to members of their community, and mentioned that Bird Safe was great to be adopted immediately in December, the way it was originally written. And a number of residents spoke and said the same thing. And then, there was a friendly amendment to the motion to do so, and no one had a chance to speak. So, I very much support taking this time to get some more things figured out and correct, in my view. But I would like to understand the process as far as the public is concerned, because am I going to have to wait until March 16th to say something again? And, or is this going to be all incorporated before that? And how do residents participate in that process? Because my main concern is that residential R1 housing is not being treated the same, nor should it be, because it's different than commercial buildings. And I have several reasons why. I won't mention them now, but I do want to be able to say specifics to staff, and I don't know how to do that.
That's a good question, Lisa. On the first item, we can't speak on the substance item on the second point you raised. But Madam City Manager, would you like to speak to the procedural item with regard to the suggestion that you're making and how that outreach would be conducted to the public, since this is the reason for trying to push this back until March 16th?
She can do that a couple of ways. Lisa has already sent in an email stating her views and her concerns, and she can also just give us, planning staff, a call and provide her input.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Our next speaker is Shawnee Kleinhouse. Welcome, Shawnee.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. I have to say, I'm disappointed. I was hoping that the Bird Safe design will be adopted. I think that the community had a very long process, and there was a lot of public and residents and others had the opportunity to join these conversations, and staff worked on it and changed it and changed it again. It worries me because sometimes when you delay things, wait two months, somebody will, that has a design that's dangerous for birds will hurry and submit it, and then you can't change it back, especially for large projects. So, I don't know if there's anything you can do, but my recommendation would be, go ahead and do the second call on the Bird Safe design. We would like to see the lighting also adopted now and not defer again. But at least the Bird Safe design is really critical to move ahead with. And I hope that you will not accept this staff recommendation. And if staff wants to continue working on that, we will be happy to continue working on it with them. But it's your decision. And I think it's, it's kind of trying for us to keep engaging the community and get more information and continue doing the research. And there's more, and there'll always be more when you're trying to make substantive change that will impact the environment in a better way. We know now that we are in what they call the Anthropocene, meaning another great extinction. The last great extinction was 66 million years ago, and at that time, they lost 76% of the biologic, of the species on the planet. We're getting there, too. We have to do everything we can. And if we wait and continue to debate, I just worry that we're going to end up with something that's very diluted, because everybody will want to take something out. And also that there'll be some large projects we can move ahead with really no Bird Safe design requirements, and that is of concern. I hope you do adopt it tonight, the second reading.
All right. Thank you, Shawnee. Our next speaker is Dashal Leeds. Welcome, Dashal.
Hello. My name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. And we are in strong support of the Bird Safe Design Ordinance. We really hope you pass the second reading tonight. I agree with the comments of Shanee that we have done a, or the city has done a significant public stakeholder outreach for this. They've held two workshops. They've noticed everyone in the city. There's been, you know, many opportunities for review and discussion, and there have been many changes after discussion made to this ordinance. And I think it's in a really good spot. And I'd also like to second Shanee's comments that we are in an ecological crisis right now. Since 1970, North America has lost nearly 3 billion birds, and we're looking at a population loss of 29% of North American birds. So, this is no small issue, and protecting the Pacific Flyway is really important. And I think this is legislation that will have a positive ripple effect once adopted. Not only will it benefit the birds and nature and people of Cupertino by having a healthy ecosystem here, but it will also inspire neighboring cities to make similar protections. And hopefully, we can develop an entire region of the Pacific Flyway that has laws in place that protect birds from unnecessary death. So, we're in strong support of this ordinance and with the dark sky provisions as well. We hope you don't delay either one of them, but, you know, pivotably, pivotally, we hope you approve the Bird Safe Design Ordinance for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dashal. Our next speaker will bring back Connie. Connie, you still have 40 seconds of your time and for technical reasons. And I do see that the city clerk is bringing up your slides. So, welcome back. Welcome, Connie.
Sorry. Would you please show the one before this one? The alive ruby-crowned kinglet, please. I wanted to mention that on February 19th, 2019, which is two years ago, I addressed the city council in support of Bird Safe Design. My purpose at that time was to encourage the city to include bird safety design and materials in their checklist for approval of all projects. The month before, on January 15th, the city had given approval to a hotel on the Goodyear site, a nice hotel. Along with other residents, I addressed the tree canopy by encouraging the requirement of large trees on the property. I specifically mentioned this little guy here, this ruby-crowned kinglet. He's four and a quarter inches long. He weighs a quarter of an ounce. He migrates at night to Cupertino in the winter and summers in Alaska and Canada.
Okay, Connie.
First, show the next picture, please.
Yep. You got about, about 10 seconds.
Okay. And that's what happens to the bird when he runs into a piece of glass. Like I said, he's four and a half ounces. I hope we vote on this, and I hope you pass it. We've been doing a great job. I hope we continue to do that, and I thank the council for approving it last time, and please approve the second reading tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Really appreciate that. And our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Hello, city council and...
Hello, city council and staff. I do not agree with passing it as it is. The friendly amendment included all R1 homes regardless. And I've sent email listing what I think should happen, but to include it and also not provide examples of acceptable treatment, it was, I went through all the different study sessions and all the meetings and nothing was in the materials. It should have been in part of the stuff, so by including the R1, you are forcing us to do something that we don't know what's acceptable. And reading the ordinance, we don't understand the difference between BirdSafe glass and treatments and which is acceptable. These need to be clear if we're supposed to follow them. And it's contradictory to allow the first fifteen feet of commercial to not follow this, but yet require every single home, every garage window, every bathroom window, everything. So I really think you need to revisit this. I, you know, go over it, get the input, fix it and come back two weeks later and pass it, but fix it. Thank you.
Thank you Peggy. And Peggy is our last public speaker on the item. I will close out public commentary on this and bring it back to council for further discussion on our postponement items being proposed, followed by a vote. And so please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. If not, I would be happy to start off my comments. Councilmember Wei, chair recognizes you.
I was thinking we, like Leon said, we could still go to number thirteen and then we can have a discussion and then decide whether we want to vote on it or postpone it. Is that a procedural that's allowed?
So I will go ahead and refer that to our city attorney.
Yes. Yes, you could consider item thirteen.
Okay. Any other comments, Councilmember Wei, at this time?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chow, chair recognizes you.
So, yeah, I think it seems we, I think a lot of residents like Peggy and Chamber raised some good comments about some ambiguity in their language, whether if they replace water heater or add your retaining wall beams, they need to do this or that. So that means certain language needs to be clarified. Maybe if we discuss the item, we can give staff direction on where what to clarify. But now we can't at this item.
Okay, any further comments, Vice Mayor Chow? No? Okay, and Councilmember Wei, your hand is still raised. Would you like to speak further on this? No? Okay, Councilmember Moore, chair recognizes you.
Thank you Mayor Paul. My preference is to have the two ordinances combined because they're, when they were separated, they needed to add in and incorporate some of the dark skies, the lighting into the BirdSafe design. When BirdSafe came to the Planning Commission, we were looking at the residential R1 homes and we looked at voluntary changes to the windows and that staff could provide guidance for the homeowners. So for instance, in my own home, I know which windows are more likely to have a bird strike and I've made my own improvements so that that stopped. Now, we need to think about what our philosophy of legislation is and when we're making a requirement which is arguably strict versus allowing voluntary compliance, I'd like to understand why we would be doing that. And to make a small house with very small side yards, have to have, if they choose to change out their windows, have to make every window bird safe when it's illogical that certain windows would ever have a bird strike. To me, that doesn't make sense. However, having staff provide education for the public so that they can provide the BirdSafe design elements in their own home, to me, seems much fairer and because...
So I'm going to stop your time here. I'm going to stop your time here and then just kind of pull back because I just want to make sure that we're talking about reasons for or against the motion on the table, which is to postpone the item. So just make sure you bring that back to where you stand on the motion on the table.
Okay, however, Mayor Paul, the suggestion of breaking the two issues up now is make it, you've got another layer of complication because technically Councilmember Wei has brought another motion, which is to allow one item to be de-heard and postpone item sixteen.
Right, there's no substitute motion on the table at this point. So we'll stay on this motion in terms of postponing both thirteen and sixteen unless there is a procedural request for a different consideration. So are your comments finished for this time, Councilmember Moore?
Sure, there's no alternative motion that has been made.
No, procedurally, there's no substitute motion on the table.
That's what I get it, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Willie, chair recognizes you.
So if we're going to potentially combine them, then I think it automatically means it's going to be a first reading at that next council meeting. It's going to be the first reading of this combined ordinance. And so I think at that time, we also have the ability to decide what allowances that we feel should be in place for residential. If we want to talk about it tonight, I think that's fine, but just I'm saying, right now it was going to be a second reading and we'd have our, to voice our concerns. So either way.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Willie. I'm going to make some comments at this point on the motion on the table, which is to postpone items thirteen and sixteen to the date certain of March sixteenth. I think, I think that we should because if there are any modifications to the BirdSafe design of item thirteen, it is going to need to be brought back as a first reading. And so correct me if I'm wrong on this, Madam City Attorney, feel free to interject, but if we do make substantive changes, this is second reading, it would have to come back as first reading. I see you're nodding your head.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So my suggestion here, in the interest and respect of the public's time and our process, because we've already invited this dialogue at this point, I think that everybody wants an effective ordinance at this point. I'm hearing a representative from the Chamber of Commerce now state that consolidated is fine and they seem to, you know, be on board with respect to working with us in order to pass this. So I think that's definitely a hopeful sign. I want to do this right. If there are real concerns about the treatments, if there are real concerns about whether indeed we needed that R1 amendment, I'd like to see that flexibility there and a comprehensive effort to address the concerns that are outstanding. So that would be my request. There is no other motion on the table. If a substitute motion is introduced, of course, I'll entertain it. But what I would like to do at this point is to ask that we consider the motion on the table. However, what I will note is I didn't move to include the other postponements that are on our agenda under the motion. And so with the leave of my second or Councilmember Willie, I would like to, whatever's procedurally correct, either take that motion off the table and include items five and six in addition to it, or just amend my own motion.
Mayor, if I may, could you please clarify if the postponement of the BirdSafe regulations are to a, to come back as a first reading so there is flexibility for council to consider changes to what is the draft of this, or what's it before council in the second reading now? What I'm asking to clarify is you're not postponing the BirdSafe to come back as a second reading, but to come back as a ordinance that can, council can consider for a first reading along with the dark sky.
Yes, what I'm asking, what I'm asking is that your office provide us that flexibility?
Yes.
Of either coming back as a separate second reading or consolidated a first reading along with dark skies?
Thank you Mayor.
That's what I'm asking.
Thank you Mayor.
Point of order, I think legally you are, we are considering postponement. So you are not allowed to change second reading on this agenda to undo our decision in December and make that first reading at this point. If we want to do that, we should not postpone it. We should still discuss it and then say we give direction so that it comes back as first reading with the following potential amendment. Dashal have some later. I don't think legally you can change, undo the decision. Basically, you are undoing the December fifteenth decision by this postponement. I think that's illegal.
Well, we could bring back both if you'd like to postpone the second reading and then have an integrated ordinance come back that council could consider as an alternative.
And the direction to have an integrated ordinance is also a direction that shouldn't be done now.
Well, I would say that dark skies...
You are forced to make a decision now, that's not on the agenda. This is not postponement.
Dark sky is currently an integrated ordinance, so it would be considering the dark sky regulations. Postponing that ordinance is basically saying we want the dark sky to come back as an integrated. Right now, it's dark sky that is before council now is an integrated ordinance that includes the BirdSafe.
No, postponement means postponing exactly what's on the agenda today. If we want to make any change, we should discuss the agenda today and then give direction for any change. I think otherwise, this is not a legal process.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, chair recognizes you. You have your hand up.
Yeah, just real quick, I don't, I'm not asking about procedures. I'm thinking that if we could not postpone thirteen and have a discussion because I think, and then on that item, we can either not, not do it, postpone it, we can make decisions. Right now, we're looking at postponing and not even talk about it. I would like to be able to talk about it.
Okay, well, let me, let me bring it back here and let me respond to the, the comment by Vice Mayor Chow that it would not be legally appropriate to bring back something that is more consolidated. I, I will say that we could postpone the second reading of BirdSafe, we could postpone the first reading of dark sky. I will point out that the date certain that's being mentioned here is March sixteenth. There is discretion between now and then to put another item on there on the March sixteenth agenda that is a consolidated and modified BirdSafe and dark sky ordinance. I actually have that discretion, so I don't agree with you that it would be procedurally inappropriate. However, I would ask that with regard to the, the item that is in front of us right now that we vote, I didn't hear a second, I didn't hear an agreement from my second on the original motion. And so I would like to ask that we vote on the original motion, which is to postpone items thirteen and sixteen as they are to the date certain of March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So barring no further discussion on that, Madam City Clerk, I would ask you to conduct a roll call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Wei.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Uh, no.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries with Chow voting no.
Okay, so...
Sorry, I also voted no.
Oh.
And Wei voting no.
Pardon me, so the motion carries with Wei and Chow voting no.
All right, so, so thank you very much. I will commit to you that we will bring forth this in a manner that is, that adheres to the integrity of the discussion and the quality of our product going forward. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion on items number five and six for the postponements.
Mayor, there is no further council action required for items five and six?
Oh, because there's been notice on the agenda.
Right, continue with staff, yes.
Okay, so at this point, we are on oral communications. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda, please raise your hand at this time. The first member of the public I have is John Zhao. Welcome, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and city council members. This is John Zhao speaking. I formally served on the Housing Commission from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen, as vice chair in two thousand and eighteen and chair in two thousand and nineteen. I am calling in to comment on commission appointments, which will be taking place over the next week. And I hope that you will consider appointments that reflect the diversity of experiences within our city. I was grateful to be appointed to the Housing Commission as a young person to try to bring an underrepresented perspective to the commission. While I was on the commission, I also mentioned the lack of representation of renters on the commission. So that's just something that I want to bring back again. I hope that all of you will consider the merits and also the diversity of experiences, not just to push forward appointments that for your own personal or political gain. So, thank you.
Thank you John. Our next speaker is Richard Mellinger. Welcome Richard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. I am also calling to speak about the upcoming commission appointment process. And I want to preface this by stating that though I am an appointed commissioner in the city of Sunnyvale, none of what I say represents the city of Sunnyvale, any organizations with which I am affiliated, or my employer. In the summer of two thousand and nineteen, the Chair of Cupertino's Planning Commission, Ray Wong, threatened my job for criticizing him on Twitter. I have spoken with you about this before. I am here tonight to urge you not to reappoint Mr. Wong to the Planning Commission. In addition to his attempts to squelch my own opinion and to intimidate me, Mr. Wong, it then transpired, had pleaded no contest to sexually harassing Redwood form, at the time Redwood City Planning Commissioner, future Chair, future Mayor Roseanne Faust, over of all things, a proposed water treatment plant. Mr. Wong subscribed her email address to pornography in an attempt to discredit her future political career. In addition to these actions, subsequent to the reporting of his threats to my employment and his actions towards Ms. Faust, Mr. Wong also attempted to intimidate another critic, my friend Ian Greensides, into silence with a frivolous defamation cease and desist letter from a right wing law firm. Honorable council members, we have all taken oaths to preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the great state of California from all enemies, foreign and domestic. An oath that after the events two weeks ago in the Capitol has great salience. Mr. Wong, free speech is at the heart of the constitutions of California and the United States. It is enshrined in the First Amendment. In his consistent pattern of attempting to intimidate his political opponents, Mr. Wong has violated the spirit, if not the letter of his oath, to protect the Constitution. I recognize no distinction between whether he made these comments from the dais or on next door. As a public official, you cannot attempt to silence criticism of you for acting in your public capacity. That is what Mr. Wong has done. It does not matter that he was not on city time while he was doing it. What, his record is unbecoming. Thank you. He is unfit for office and should not be reappointed under any circumstances. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you Richard. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, council members and staff. I'd like to thank the city staff and the council for being proactive, addressing issues. I know it's a lot of work and I myself give you a lot of grief, but I really do appreciate the work. I know it's a lot of work and I myself give you a lot of grief, but I really do appreciate the work. Cities do not like losing local control. That goes the same with residents. Losing the flexibility to choose how they address issues in their own home is important and gives them, uh, a good feeling. With that said, I'd like to remind you, um, all that when creating new laws, first determine whether you can educate rather than legislate. Solve the top three cases, the majority of the problem. Make the biggest bang. Don't go for the lowest hanging fruit that's easy to, to control but won't give you the end result. And also make these laws objective. Make sure that everything is defined, it's clear, and a law that's easy to understand will be followed by everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Neil Park McClintock. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, okay, cool. Sorry about that. Uh, thank you for having me, uh, honorable mayor and council. First, I wanted to recognize, um, the bravery of, uh, Richard who spoke just before me. Um, there's certainly a lot of discussion on, um, Planning Commissioner Wong that's been had in the past. And there's always multiple sides to an issue. But the fact of the matter is that he did take a plea deal. He accepted a conviction for breaking the law for cyberbullying a public official who he disagreed with. And there is documentation through screenshots that he has attempted to get people fired from their jobs and has constantly harassed people in that space as well. I have yet to see a formal apology, either from himself nor the folks who appointed him. And the only real response I've seen was from then-Mayor Sharp, who more or less basically gave him the slap, a slap on the wrist and said, "Don't do it again." You know, there's, there's one thing to disagree on political issues, but who we represent on a commission uh, should represent the values of our city, and so who we appoint should also represent the value of our cities, city as well. It reflects poorly that we've done nothing about, uh, Commissioner Wong. And so I'm hoping, uh, that in this upcoming appointment cycle, that he is not reappointed under any circumstances uh, because he's engaged in anti-democratic behavior. And at the very least, commissioners need to be committed to democratic engagement, uh, which he has proven indeed in word that he is not. Uh, but beyond that, I also just wanted to make some comments about the need for diversity in our commissions. I think that Cupertino has an incredible amount of diversity in many ways. And compared to other cities like Palo Alto, I think we've done an excellent job in actually having diverse commissions. I was just looking through Palo Alto's commissions and they're largely like eighty, ninety percent white, for example, older and white. Um, and so in many ways, we are succeeding. I think the next step is figuring out how can we also diversify on crucial commissions, uh, in terms of diversity of opinion, uh, age, and also renter status. I don't know of any report that we have, but my instinct is that we have very, very few renters and very few young folks outside of the teen commission on our commissions. And so I'm hoping with these upcoming appointments, uh, to match the scale of the issues that we're gonna have to face. You know, Cupertino is gonna have to plan for thousands and thousands of homes. How can we also incorporate the voices of renters and young people who really are gonna have a huge say and their quality of life is gonna be massively impacted by the decisions that we make? Um, and so with that, I'll, I'll, um, go ahead and end my comment. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Neil. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Actually, I, can I come back later? I've got an emergency call to take. Can I raise my, lower my hand and raise it again?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Anjali Kouser. Welcome, Anjali.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, Kristen, can I ask you to share, um, I had sent you a screen with two things on it. Yes, thank you so much. Um, Mayor Paul and council members, I would like to share with you that the Chamber of Commerce was recognized by the County of Santa Clara and we received the exceptionary service to the District Five Communication, Community during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. I wanted to share with you that we had received this medal. And, um, next slide, please. I also, uh, wanted to invite you all to our upcoming Lunar New Year, uh, celebration happening on, uh, February eighteenth at five PM. It's gonna be a virtual event. We'll be honored to have you all present at this event. We are, uh, we are recognizing our local business, Key, Key Point Credit Union, and Angela Chen as the, uh, bridge award individual. So if you're able to attend, we would love to have you there. We'll have a lot of, uh, other activities, a fashion show, cooking demonstration, um, and also presentations, uh, about, uh, what the Chinese New Year is, musical presentation and the dance performance. So hope to see you all, the city manager and everybody in Cupertino who's listening. Please go to the chamber website and, uh, sign up to be present at our annual Lunar New Year celebration on February eighteenth. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anjali. Our next speaker is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. I'm here to address the upcoming interviews for vacancies on city commissions, which will be holding next week on Monday and Tuesday. I've been an observer at the last two interview cycles, and frankly, I've been disappointed by the council choices. And the fact that the council failed to follow its own policies. Resolution number three dash two oh three specifically states the benefit of a variety of perspectives in making decisions. Um, and that new members should represent the community by such factors as, um, gender, age, and location within the city. And there are gaps. Currently, there are no women on planning commission. There's no women on bike ped. There are no renters on housing, but there are two real estate agents. That variety of perspectives should include those who don't have an engineering degree. Some of the strongest contributors to our city have been educators, the second largest employer in the city. Former mayors Michael Chang and Dolly Sandoval were both educators. I would like to see commissioners with a social services background. I'd like to see the commissioners who have a professional expertise in land use planning, which will be the major challenge for this city in the upcoming years. Please consider qualifications, not political support, in filling commission vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Peter Chu. Welcome, Peter.
Yes, hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. Happy New Year. Um, keep my comments short this time. I was, uh, very pleased, uh, at the end of the very late night of twelve fifteen hearing that there were some comments made by, I think, almost all council member regarding wanting to visit the five G cell site issues, including, uh, looking at into as municipal code, uh, code from, uh, Councilmember Moore. Um, I guess there's no follow-up on that. I was a little bit disappointed. Perhaps there's too many issues this time to see it on the agenda this time. Um, I'd just like to sort of, uh, remind that this is something I'm still getting, I guess somehow I put my name out there. Other people are contacting me from around the city, uh, as we see the rollout of five G cells across the city. So if, um, if, if there were some questions that were posed, I'd love to see it being followed up. And, uh, I'd love to see it, so, so to get the comments from all the citizens who are very concerned and see us move forward on that. Appreciate your support in this.
Thank you, Peter. Our next and last speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, and, and thanks for your indulgence. I really had to pick that call. Um, okay, now I gotta catch my breath. So, uh, um, I've actually changed what I was going to say earlier today during oral, and I want to, um, I want to touch on what Mr. Mellinger from Sunnyvale spoke of. Mr. Mellinger himself has inserted himself with strong opinions in a very aggressive way at several of our cities' public meeting. I am not aware of anyone who reached out to the Sunnyvale City Council and urged them not to nominate him or appoint him to the commission that he is now on. I see a double standard. I'm insulted by it and I don't appreciate it. Also, in some of the same vein as his comments, there is actually a well-known developer in this area who is known to participate in compromising the employment of others. Just for fun. That is all I can say about that. And between the call and that statement needing to be made, I, I really can't even remember what I was gonna originally say. So, thank you again for your indulgence.
Thank you, Lisa. Our, uh, next item on the agenda, our oral communication is being concluded, uh, is going to be our reports by council and staff. Item number seven is the city manager update on emergency response efforts. Madam City Manager.
I'll try to keep my report as short as possible, but I say that every time, so apologies. Um, as you probably noticed from media, most of the focus right now regarding COVID-nineteen is on vaccinations. I'm gonna give you as much information as I have right now, with the understanding that it's also changing as we speak. Um, we are currently in, um, Phase One A of the Vaccination Administration. Um, basically what that means is, um, healthcare workers and worker, uh, and long-term care residents are in Phase One A. Part of Phase One B, it's gonna get very complicated, part of Phase One B, um, is also being incorporated. Individuals that are seventy-five years of age and older, plus people that are, um, in police forces or the police. Um, the distribution is healthcare, healthcare workers are getting vaccinated by their employer who receive vaccinations directly from the state. Long-term care residents are getting vaccinated by CVS and Walgreens, being supplied with vaccinations directly from the feds. Individuals seventy-five years of age or older are getting vaccinated by their healthcare provider or if uninsured by county via the county health system. To make things even a little more confusing, if your healthcare provider is Kaiser, they are currently administering vaccines to sixty-five years and older. So they've departed a little bit from the state guidance. Um, and I also mentioned that law enforcement is being moved into this Phase One A distribution. Phase One B, which has not started yet, has two tiers. Tier one was those individuals seventy-five years and older and those that work in education, childcare, emergency services, and food and agriculture. Tier two are people sixty-five to seventy-four years of age and those that work in transportation, logistics, industrial, commercial, residential, and sheltering facilities and services, and critical manufacturing functions. Congregate settings with outbreak risk, including incarcerated and homeless situations, are also in tier two of Phase One B. And all, we will post this, so don't, nobody try to take notes or anything. We'll post this to the website and get it out, um, tomorrow in our COVID update. Finally, Phase One C, um, individuals fifty to sixty-four years of age, individuals sixteen to forty-nine years of age with something called comorbidities or underlying secondary health, health conditions. Those that work in water and wastewater, defense, energy, chemical and hazardous materials, um, communications and IT, financial services, government operations slash community-based essential functions, where's, which is where most city government employees will fall, will fall somewhere between Phase One B and One C because of public works and emergency response. There's been some information on, um, antibody treatments, so I thought I would give you as much information as I have on that. There were two antibody treatments that have been approved on an accelerated schedule, um, through the FDA. One is called BAM. I'm not gonna, I don't know what it sta, I do know what it stands for, but it's something I can't, can't pronounce. Bam Lan of, Bam Lan of the, Vamamab, whatever. And then the second one is, um, uh, a, a similar, uh, regimen, antibody regimen called, um, Rem, Remdisivir. Uh, and they're mainly for sixty-five years or older people with chronic medical conditions and with a positive COVID, uh, test or have Co, have had COVID or are, or do have COVID. It does seem to, uh, help those symptoms subside. We cannot, at this time, I don't have a way to, uh, tell you how much supply we have in the county, but I do know that the county is tracking the supply of these two antibody treatments very closely to try and figure out. The disadvantage that the county has right now is the distribution of this treatment plus the vaccines are coming from the feds in three different buckets. They're only really know what's happening with this bucket that they're getting distributions for. I distributed slides to the council that I don't expect you to look at, but it is in there, how those vaccines are distributed, which describes why the county only sees a little bit. They are working with care providers, um, so that we can post data. You can see how many first doses and second doses have been administered. There's a website. I will post them and make them available, um, as soon as I can. Um, we do have a testing date tomorrow at Senior Center, um, as usual. It's on January twentieth, um, nine thirty to three forty-five by appointment. There are appointments available, I think, and testing is open to everyone, not just seniors. Um, I do want to talk a little bit about something not related to the, uh, pandemic for a minute. There hit, there is a PG&E outage that has actually affected at least two of our council members. Um, it was because of the high winds. Some five thousand four hundred and fifteen Cupertino customers to PG&E were out of power today at some point in time. Some still may be out of power. Um, there wasn't really a scheduled publish, but I do know that PG&E was, were out there kind of addressing the problems as we spoke. There was a small grass fire caused by one of these, um, I think it's a down transformer and a, a dysfunctional transformer at Stern and Lori Drive, and it was addressed this morning by emergency response. Um, there's, uh, PG&E crews are still working from what I understand. Um, and evacuations have been ordered in Santa Cruz County because there's an active fire threat there. So strange, in the middle of January, they've been evacuated. Um, back to the pandemic, um, we currently have six hundred and eighty cases by zip code, six hundred and ninety cases by city. Now, I realize that from our last council meeting, which was December fifteenth, um, we had, those numbers were more like, make sure I have the right numbers. Those dou, those numbers have doubled. There were three hundred and twenty-two cases by city, three hundred and sixteen cases by zip code. So we're still okay in terms of cases per one hundred thousand, but we're moving like the rest of the county has. And unfortunately, the county has reached a not-good milestone of a thousand deaths due to COVID in the, in the county. Uh, Parks and Recreation, in response to guidelines and recommendations under the purple tier and the regional stay-at-home order, use of city fields for activities is limited to, is limited between members of the same household. Youth sports organizations will be permitted for field use according to the local and state restrictions as of February first. Picnic sites and playgrounds remain open, but use is limited to one household at a time. Playground signage will be updated shortly. The city continues to offer virtual recreation opportunities which can be found online in the recreation guide at regforrec.org. A little bit more about field use sports, because that's really one of the only outlets our kids have to getting exercise and being outdoors. Um, field use sport, uh, the county's health order is a little bit confusing on this front, so we're going to continue to allow field use with the following conditions. Drills only. Games like soccer end up being a contact sport. Parents must drop off and pick up rather than stay and gather. All other safety protocols must be followed. Face coverings six feet apart from each other and drills only, sorry. So we have communicated this to our official field users for sports and hopefully they can abide by the protocols or all have to take probably a little more stricter look at the field use. Finally, a little update on our homeless encampments. The temporary outdoor location is constantly kind of being monitored. It's gotten a little bit bigger, but we're in conversation with county and abode about the outdoor location as we promised. And the city's agreement with abode has been finalized, so I'll soon be able to report on some data, including financial performance. And that's all I had for today. Thank you.
Okay, great. I just remember to remind everyone that this is a brief updates on our, on our activities. City Manager, thank you. I, I know that these are written-down updates as well, and so we can provide those as part of our meeting materials going forward. Would anyone from council like to share your committee contacts since the last meeting? If you would raise your hand, I'll call on you. Has anyone had committee contact? Okay, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so I'm stepping into Rod Zink's set of shoes for Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And so on the 13th, we had the regular meeting. And noteworthy items that we approved a 10-year contract with Atlas Solar. And so they're going to be supplying 50 megawatts of power for 10 years. And that really helps us address greenhouse gases and climate change. Another important note would be that during this pandemic, a lot of utility customers, residents, have fallen behind in payments. And the state has put out a program that the Silicon Valley Clean Energy hopes to participate in, which will give forgiveness for customers that have fallen behind in their payments. So watch for that. It would be in the February timeframe. And then we elected the new chair and vice chair. So I'll leave it at that for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. It was a lesson in conciseness and brevity. Thank you very much. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I have started my learning curve. I am not a official board member, but I'm alternate for the Clean Energy. So I watched John in action and I attended meeting and learned from it. So it was very nice to learn. And I also attended the, the city's association board just to listening. So I'm in a full learning mode.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So on the 16th of December, there was a housing survey subcommittee meeting. We have finalized this survey. And then that should be sending out, hopefully find, getting the result at the end of this fiscal year, so in spring. And on the 16th, also there was Santa Clara Airport Noise Roundtable Meeting. And I think we, we are trying to find a fiscal agent for the roundtable. And on the January 8th, there is Legislative Review Committee. Now we are starting a new legislative lesson. So we recommended a legislative platform for the council. And on the 14th, the, I'm now on the League of Cities Policy Committee on Housing and the Community and the Economic Development. They approved the strategic goals for the League of Cities. And they are starting to look at bills. A lot of bills are proposed and they have taken no position so far. On the January 14th, also I attended the Cities Association. This is for Santa Clara County Cities Association Select Committee. So this is a committee that we, no me made members to represent the county as a whole. So one of the committee, no one volunteered, so I volunteered myself. So now I'm on the recycle and waste management commission for the county. And then there is the Board of Director meeting, which you mentioned. And they have, the board has approved the four focus for this year. And for each of this focus, they will form subcommittees to study. And any council members of the Brooklyn Cities can participate, volunteer for these subcommittees. The four goals are COVID recovery and business retainment and transportation, racial justice. The fourth one is housing and homeless. And then they have approved the letters for two VTA. So to ensure that VTA doesn't spend over 25% of Major B funding on BART. And yeah, that's all. And they mentioned that there are multiple funding provided by ABAC that the city can apply for. So the city should not miss those opportunities.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore.
Hey, I'm going to keep this really brief. So I also was on the Legislative Review Committee with Vice Mayor Chow. And, and she's already given an update on that. On the 14th, I had two meetings back-to-back, actually overlapping the VTA PAC. I was named the chair and I look forward to representing the city there. And I am also on the League of California Cities Environmental Quality Policy Committee. There are 13 new members out of 50. It was a pretty interesting meeting because there, there are members who've been there for decades and they know everything. So I look forward to learning a lot from them. And I thought it was kind of interesting that some of the housing bills and their impact on the environment were brought up. I thought that was pretty relevant to some of the things we've been looking at here with regards to how housing laws have been used, such as SB 35 in the city. And we will be looking at sequel legislation. The current cycle, if you will, for new bills to be brought forward is going to end February 19th. And then we're really going to be getting into the thick of things with the new laws, proposed laws, I should say.
Congratulations on being the chair of VTA Board.
Yes, thank you very much. You're, you're out of turn, but I appreciate that. That is actually exactly what I was going to mention. Congratulations in my remarks. And so, yes, let me reiterate that. Congratulations for being the chair in your very first meeting of the Policy Advisory Committee of the Valley Transportation Authority. I was the vice chair of that committee last year. It is comprised of representatives from every one of our cities in Santa Clara County, as well as the county itself. It is a very comprehensive committee of the various jurisdictional representations coming from Santa Clara County to VTA. Now, one of the last things I did on the PAC was to bring forth the issue of Measure B funding and how there seemed to be a potentially disproportionate allocation between some major project allocation in downtown San Jose versus some of the outlying cities. As it was, it was all, it was all initial. Nothing was set in stone. And so I think that between staff, as well as council of various cities, including our own, we were able to really shine some light and bring some attention to the idea that we can't be focusing all of these dollars, which were promised to the taxpayers, you know, to be no more than 25% on the BART extension in downtown San Jose for a period of time on that extension. We do need it for our roads, for our trails, for the other buckets of funding that Measure B was promised when our voters voted for it. And so to remind our public, Cupertino played a very pivotal role in making sure that approximately $350 million of the Measure B funding was in fact allocated to Highway 85 and more particularly some type of transit solution along Highway 85. And I'm, I'm very happy to report to the public in Cupertino that I was actually selected by, by five votes of our West Valley cities at the end of last year, including our then-Mayor Stephen Scharf, to represent those five West Valley cities of Campbell, ourselves, Monta Serena, Saratoga, as well as Los Gatos, to the VTA Board itself. And so we did have our first meeting of the year on January 7th. We talked about the Measure B funding allocations. We, we did touch upon some of the questions with regard to Highway 85 funding coming out of Measure B. But I think more immediately, VTA has definitively heard loud and clear, and they've been quoted in our, our local paper of this region as, as hearing that message loud and clear. And so we, we do really have, I think, unprecedentedly excellent representation in our local transit authority coming out of Cupertino. But of course, you know, these are regional issues. Transit at the end of the day is also something that is very important, regional infrastructure, to be able to figure out prior to being able to figure out other, other problems. And so I, I'm really committed to trying to separate out the issue of, of making sure that our transit is fixed. Because once we do that, I think that lays down really good infrastructure for the future from, from other problems. Yes, I, I've never stated that housing is not a problem, but I think that we need to be intelligent and stepwise about how we, we solve our, our problems, as well as savvy about the, the voting sentiment. Now, I do have a piece of information to report as part of my information that I receive as a VTA Board member. And that's that our executive, top executive of the VTA has been appointed or is on the cusp of an appointment to the Biden administration. And so Nurya Fernandez has stepped down as the VTA chairperson, I think it is. And so I think we'll have a really good connection into, into the new transit administration in our federal government. And general counsel of VTA right now is the acting, acting chair of VTA. And her name is Evelyn Tran. So that's my update from committee assignments. Let's go on to our, well, let me go on to any members of the public that'd like to speak on that particular item. I don't see any hands raised. And so I'll go ahead and go on to our consent calendar, which encompasses items nine through 11. Is there a motion from the council on consent?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items nine, 10, and 11.
Second? I'm sorry?
I second.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, motions. And Councilmember Moore, seconds to move the consent calendar. Are there any other, are there any comments on this motion? Or any desire to pull items from the consent calendar? I don't see any hands raised from either the public or from our council. And so Madam City Clerk, if you would, please conduct a roll call vote on the consent calendar motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Our next section is our second reading of ordinances. Item number 12 is the second reading of ordinance number 20-2218, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter 6.24, which deals with garbage, non-organic recycling and organic waste recycling collection and disposal. Is there a presentation from staff on the second reading of ordinance number 20-2218? I see Roger Lee has appeared and has unmuted himself. He's shaking his head, however.
No, just saying there is no presentation, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions from council on this item? I don't see any raised hands. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this second reading? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council to entertain a motion regarding item 12.
Mayor Paul, can I make a motion? I like to learn how to make motions.
Yes, please do. It's, it's second reading, in fact.
Yes. So if I, if I read it correctly, this is what I'm going to move. I move that ordinance number 20-20 to 18 be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof. I move that ordinance number 20-20 to 18 being enacted.
Okay, well, if I, if I may make just a friendly amendment to that before you seek a second. Can, can we just interject in between your two motions that upon, and, and upon approval by the city council, I move that this be enacted? If you wanted to put it all into one motion.
I'd accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, great. Is there a second to Councilmember Wei's motion?
I'll second.
Great. Councilmember Willie, seconds. And Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the second reading of ordinance number 20-2218?
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 20-2218, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter 6.24, garbage, non-organic recycling and organic waste recycling collection and disposal.
Okay, very good. With the draft ordinance attached as A to item number 12. Are there any comments or further questions from council at this point? I don't see any hands raised. That being the case, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote of the motion?
Mayor Paul?
Yes, Councilmember Moore.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Do we open this up for any public comment?
We did. I, I believe I did. Did I not open it up for a public comment?
I don't feel like I heard it.
You did.
You did.
Okay, okay, yeah, I thought.
Oh, you did, okay.
There are a lot of these things.
Excellent, thank you.
No worries. Okay, so let's conduct the roll call vote, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Take your call.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. We have postponed item number 13 to March 16th. The next section is public hearings. We have item 14. Does anybody care to take a, a break at this point? I, I am fine with taking a five-minute break. If you want to keep going, that is fine as well.
I think a five-minute break would be good since we went through the study session and now the regular session. Five minutes would be fine.
Okay, I have 8:18 on my clock. Let's reconvene at 8:23. We'll see you then. Thank you.